I'd like to call the meeting to order, the Wycomico County Council, starting with the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father.
In the name of our Father, and of his Son, and of his holy Spirit. On earth as it is in heaven, give us this very quick and immediate grace, and forgive us all our trespasses, and forgive us all our sins. And be with us in the deep, in the life of our people, in the lives of your kingdom, in the power and glory forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which there stands one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda, I'd like to get an approval of the legislative minutes from the February 6th, 2018 meeting.
So moved.
Second. Second. Any questions? Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of open work session minutes from January 16th, 2018, of the Wycomico County Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Motion carried. I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of open work session minutes, January 16th, 2018, rezoning requests and proposed text amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Entertained a motion for approval of open work session minutes, January 16th, 2018, council manic, district map, software presentation.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion carried. An approval for the open work session minutes, January 16th, 2018, storm water management and winter storm Grayson update.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the open work session minutes from January 16th, 2018, capital improvement budget and program, Department of Public Works, including Roads Division and Solid Waste Division.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All opposed? Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carried. Like to entertain a motion for open work session minutes from January 16th, capital improvement budget and program, General Services.
So moved.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Entertained a motion for approval of open work session minutes, January 16th, 2018, solid waste management plan amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Need a motion for the approval of the closed work session minutes from January 19th, 2017, personnel approval of closed, excuse me, personnel.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Entertained approval for closed work session minutes from December 5th, 2017, to consult with staff consultants or other individuals about pending potential litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. Vice President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 12, 2018, to amend the fiscal years 2018-2022 capital improvement program and capital budget to include grant funding in the amount of $99,000 for the Cedar Hill Marina Restoration Project in fiscal year 2018 to replace failing bulkhead, pollings, and finger piers at the Cedar Hill Marina. And we have Pam Olin, Deputy Director of Recreation Parks and Tourism here, if there are any questions.
Do we have a motion for Resolution Number 12, 2018, to amend the fiscal years 2018 and 2020, capital movement program and capital budget to include grant funding in the amount of $99,000?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Public hearing.
Oh, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone from the audience that would like to make any comments in reference to this? That being said, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 13, 2018, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Boating Services Waterway Improvement Fund in the amount of $99,000. This grant is the same grant that was just referenced in the prior resolution. This resolution is to accept the grant so that way the work can begin in fiscal year 18.
I'd like to entertain a motion for Resolution Number 13, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Delmarva Shorebirds Community Report by Mr. Chris Bitters, General Manager, and Kathy Demote, Community Relations Manager.
Please join us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks. With me today is Kathy Demoto. She's our Community Relations Manager. I wanted to take today, thank you for your time. We'll be brief. I know you have a busy agenda. I wanted to just present to you our 2017 annual community relations recap. For 22 years, the Shorebirds have been a big part of the community and always reaching out and doing various things. And in my 12 years as General Manager, we've never really formalized what we do on an annual basis to share our story with the community at large. So this year, we decided to do that. Kathy did an excellent job putting together the report you have. It's 56 pages long, so we will not be going through it page by page, but you guys can review it at your leisure over time. But I did want to just highlight a few things. We unveiled it a couple of weeks ago at our Hot Stove Banquet here at the Civic Center with Michael Gibbons from the Orioles as our guest. That event in and of itself is a fundraising event that benefits United Way of the Lower Eastern Shore, and usually have about 200 guests attend. A couple of highlights throughout the booklet, it's organized by section, whether it be youth baseball, things we do in schools, other things we do out in the community. But just a couple of highlights for each of you, as you peruse that over time, is our Hit the Books Reading Program, which has gone on for the majority of the time the Shorebirds existed, currently works with approximately 100 schools. Last year, to be exact, it was 96 schools, and we distributed almost 50,000 bookmarks to schoolchildren to encourage them to read books outside the classroom. Those 48,000 bookmarks resulted in about 50% of the kids completing the program and us donating almost 43,000 tickets to local schoolkids that read books outside the classroom as a reward to come out to a Shorebirds game. We also donated over $17,000 in monetary donations. Those are funds raised through events like our Hot Stove Banquet, the Jersey Auctions that basically us do, whether it's the July 4th jersey, our Maryland Pride jersey, our pink jersey for the Henson Cancer Institute. Those are all things that we do as part of our game day experience to help raise funds to those charitable groups in our community, as well as we made over 425 in-kind donations to local Little League schools, churches, organizations that are trying to host silent auctions or other fundraisers to raise funds for their. So a few figure 425, that's basically a donation a day, a little more than a donation a day that Kathy's filling out for office on a regular basis, as well as we had groups that do various programs with us, raise over $54,000 through in-stadium fundraisers. So those are just a few of the highlights, but we wanted to share this personally with you guys, with the group. We're very proud of it, very proud of the work Kathy does in our community. And again, this is the first year we've put together a formal kind of recap of what we do. So I know you guys have been the agenda with a lot of things, more important matters than this, but wanted to share that, you know, pitchers and catches reported last week, and yesterday was the first official team workout for baseball down at spring training, so we're obviously excited to just kick off the 2018 season, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, are these available to the general public?
We do have a limited supply. We printed some, but yeah, if somebody from the general public wanted a copy, we also have it digitally online on our website, the public can review. And we did, at our Hot Stove Banquet, have them at the tables for the 200 or so guests that came out, but.
Do you want to say your website address?
Yeah, if people want to view it, you can go to www.theshorebirds.com, or if you really want a hard copy, stop by our offices at the stadium, we'll be able to provide one to you, so.
Anyone else? Got it?
Chris, appreciate you being here today. Do us a favor, give us a little bit of history about Shorebirds, and why, and where, and how. Take a little bit of time.
Okay, yeah. Well, I want to be respectful, but I would definitely do so, Mr. Hall. Thank you. You know, obviously, the Shorebirds started here in 1996, and we just completed our 22nd season in 2017. As we all know, the stadium was started in a partnership between Maryland Baseball, which included Frank Perdue, along with funding from Wycomico County and the State of Maryland. As this group well knows, we extended that lease for another 20 years, a couple of years ago, and we're in the middle of a multi-phase improvement program to make sure that Purdue Stadium is a nice asset for the community for the next 20 years.
That's in conjunction with the county.
And that is also in conjunction with Wycomico County, the State of Maryland, and the team as well. Back in, I started as General Manager when our organization, Seventh East Stretch, purchased the Delmarva Shorebirds from Comcast Spectacor. We made that transaction in the fall of 2006, heading into the 2007 season. So I've been General Manager for 12 of the 22 years that the Shorebirds have existed. One of our big things as a company and organization is that we're big on being involved in the community. When I got here, a couple of years after I got here, we started our Community Foundation Fund with the Community Foundation of the Lower Eastern Shore, and our goal was to raise funds and find ways to give back and do great work in the community. We're actually to a point that one of Kathy's goals this year is to find somewhat of a signature project that we can help be a seed money to, I guess you would say. We don't have enough money to be a total benefactor of something, but possibly be able to have some seed money that we can help an organization do some great work. And we have a couple of ideas, some organizations that we're currently working with to see how we can, we can do that. But, you know, through the years, the programs that we've executed in the community are very important to us, whether it's our senior program on Wednesdays that allows seniors access to, you know, a lot of games for about 20 bucks for the entire season, for all the Wednesday games, or whether it be our Hit the Books Reading Program, our Summer Library Reading Program, all of the youth baseball stuff that we do, so.
And you've moved some pretty good baseball players through the system.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as a front office, we focus on the game experience and what we do in the community with the Orioles. You know, that's their job. Obviously, the first year, we're an Expos affiliate, I think a lot of people know that or some people don't, but we were an Expos affiliate that very first year and became an Orioles affiliate that second year. But yeah, if you look at the major league roster in Baltimore today and over the past several years, guys like Zach Britton, Manny Machado, Jonathan Scope are all players that played right here in Salisbury, Maryland, they're now, obviously contributing to the big league level. And a lot of people that are part of trades that, if you look at other teams roster, whether Zach Davies of the Brewers, I think had 14 big league wins last year, and he was with us a couple of years ago, Parker Bridwell with the Angels, Eduardo Rodriguez with the Red Sox, these are all guys the Orioles traded away, trying to improve over the last couple of years as they were making some playoff runs. But we've had a lot, we've had a lot of guys that have started, over 100 players have came through Salisbury that are now in the major leagues or have played in the major leagues, so. So it's an impressive list of folks that have played right here in our hometown, so.
Great.
That's significant for people that like baseball and they know a player that they like and say, hey, he played in Salisbury with us.
It's very cool to see these guys progress, as well as we try to have that blended experience that if you're not a baseball fan, you're coming with a baseball fan, try to provide other things that may entertain you throughout the course of a 90-yard ballgame that makes you enjoy the experience regardless of the fact that you may not be a diehard player on the field baseball fan, so.
Any more questions?
All right.
When is opening day? I don't know if you.
Opening day is April 5th, so we're counting down the days. I count down, well, I count down months, so we're not quite a month away yet, but yeah, we're hard at it at the stadium and preparing the facility for getting ready to open for April 5th, 2018, our first home game, so.
Well, thank you for all you do. Baseball is very important to many of us on Eastern Shore here, and certainly for Wycomico County. Maybe you can do a season recap in the fall?
Absolutely, I'd love to do that.
If you're not so busy?
No, I always make time to be here.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 14, 2018, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award from the Governor's Office of Crime, Control, and Prevention Justice Information Sharing Solutions Project in the amount of $10,000. The Department of Corrections has received grant funding, which will enable the department to share offender information with other local jails, detention centers, and law enforcement via the Maryland Criminal Justice Dashboard, and this is Director George Calamakis.
I'd like to entertain a motion for Resolution Number 14, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We have Mr. Kay here to talk about it.
Good morning.
I'm not going to try to pronounce your name again.
George Calamakis, Wycomico County Department of Corrections. Basically, this is a grant that will take our information from our jail information system and share it with 272 criminal justice agencies via an electronic dashboard that's established through the criminal justice information system in Maryland. It's a federal grant through the Governor's Office of Crime Control. It's been in the works for several years. They launched it about three years ago. They brought three local facilities online. Now this year, they're trying to bring everybody else online who wants to participate, and we elected to participate. So it's just sharing information among the criminal justice community, and it'll be completely funded. The funding primarily is for the interface between the state system and our vendor that provide, that we have our jail information system with.
Okay, any questions? Joe? Yep. Okay. John?
This is a matching grant, right?
Well, no, we, it's an in-kind. It just, I'm going to have a staff person who more or less is our liaison between the two groups as it's in progress and development, so just their time.
So this will be, this is a one-time grant from the state?
Yeah.
And it will be part of a continuing project?
Right, this is to, yeah, this is to create the interface.
Okay.
And then, once it's established, the maintenance of the interface will be covered in our existing maintenance agreement, so.
Any more questions? All right, have a motion in a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Next is Resolution Number 15, 2018.
Thank you.
Authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award in the amount of $233,977 from the Maryland Aviation Administration Special Projects Program to assist with rehabilitation of four taxi lanes at the Salisbury Ocean City Wycomico Regional Airport, and we have Assistant Manager James Harris here.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for Resolution Number 15, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Any questions? Don, you got anything? You look like you have anything.
No, I understand what it's for, and I think, although, you want to, you got James come up here and explain it?
I was waiting for.
No?
Come join us, please. Yeah, I was looking for Don.
You get to introduce yourself, James.
Welcome.
I'm James Harris, I'm the Assistant Manager for the airport.
Let's pick up the microphone.
My name's James Harris, I'm the Assistant Manager for the airport.
All right.
We're seeking funding to rehabilitate four of our T-hanger taxiways. They've been deteriorating over the years. It's a MAA portion is 75%, we pay 25%. We have the funding to match that grant.
Where's that funding come from, the 25%?
The 25% is $77,992.
Where does that come from?
That comes from our capital improvement fund.
Okay.
And let me help it a little bit. This has been in the works for about five years. It was unanticipated that we'd have a grant from the NAA. We had anticipated paying for this out of the capital improvements from the airport, so this is really a bonus that's come through. I think it has to be completed by June 30th.
Yes, sir. The project has to be completed by June 30th.
I know there's been a lot of complaints from the people in the T-hangers about their propellers kicking up stones and stuff like that.
Yes, sir, and they're scraping their fairings.
Right, yeah.
We got water running into the hangars, so they need to be regraded. So a lot of work needs to be done.
Will that be concrete, or will that be asphalt?
It will be asphalt.
Asphalt, okay. This might be a question for Wayne or Weston. Is this something that County Roads can help with the project, or is this going to be bid out to a private?
It would be bid out.
Bid out, okay.
Now, without the capital improvement budget in front of me, that was in the capital improvement budget to do this, so will this money that the MAA is putting in come out of the capital improvement? Will that be diverted to something else, some other project that we already had in?
I thought my head generated a call. Wayne, I'll help with that. That's in the enterprise fund.
It's coming out of the airport's enterprise.
Right.
Okay, all right.
This isn't funded as a general investment fund.
Okay, all right. So the money will be diverted in use for something else, okay. Thank you for that. I know we're running out of time, I just wondered, since Mr. Straubberg mentioned the bidding, do we have time to get it done by June?
Oh, the bidding's already out.
Oh, it's already been put out there?
Yes, sir.
So the contractor's ready to go?
Yes, sir, just needs a funding.
Okay, good.
Anything else?
If you need another letter, I've got a couple Buckeye ones that I'm not using. But thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Next, we have Resolution Number 16, 2018, confirming the appointment of Ms. Debbie Moore to the Wycomico County Personnel Board. The Personnel Board hears and decides appeals from personnel actions. The Board also advises county officials on matters concerning personnel rules and regulations, and it reports to the county executive and the county council on the operation of the personnel system.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for Resolution Number 16, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
You got a motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 17, 2018, confirming the appointment of Mr. A. Gene M. Turnbull to the Wycomico County Local Management Board. The Local Management Board promotes a safe, healthy, and stable environment for children and families in Wycomico County.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion for Resolution Number 17, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Next is Resolution Number 18, 2018, approving the capital program for Wycomico County for fiscal years 2019-2023, and we have Mr. Wayne Strasburg, Director of Administration here, if there are any questions.
Need a motion for Resolution 18, 2018?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any question for Mr. Strasburg? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 19, 2018, extending the date for voting on legislative bill 2018-01. This bill is repealing Chapter 133, titled Dogs and Other Animals, and enacting a new Chapter 133, titled Animal Control, extending the date to March 6th. Will give legal counsel additional time to review the document.
So moved.
I'd like to have a motion for Resolution Number 19, 2018. They do have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion on this? Is that going to be enough time?
That's actually up to our legal counsel.
Time will tell.
All right. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Chair votes aye. Mr. Roser?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I call your attention to Council Resolution 20, 2018, concerning the Munis and IT firewall security consultation.
Ms. Harley, do we need to vote on this?
You do need a motion, yes.
Okay, like a motion, to entertain a motion for Resolution Number 20, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion in a second?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
The Office of the Internal Auditor performed an inquiry of Munis security. The main purpose was to gain an understanding of the county protocols, and what we determined was that the county has a very effective system of controls, and we did not find it necessary to perform any testing. Munis security is handled by the software provider. We actually operate Munis on Tyler Technology servers in Maine. Our IT department has taken proactive steps to secure the balance of our county information systems. We reviewed user account permissions, firewalls, and data protection. The only suggestion offered was that the county should provide more training to end users. Special thanks go to Ray and John from IT for their input, and we'll be happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Roser. Good job. Do we have any questions for Mr. Roser?
Yeah. You say that the end users need more training. Is that training available locally? I know that at times we've had people make trips to take the training, and I was wondering if, you know, get somebody to come in and train everybody locally instead of doing as many, as much travel.
I think what was discussed before Councilman Holloway was to have Munis, specifically Munis, training in-house, and there's been some discussion as far as that goes. The training we refer to here is very simply training for protection, that is, training end users, the dangers of phishing scams, people trying to hack into the internet through email, what to look for, that sort of thing. I think what you were referring to was formal Munis training that we have discussed in other venues, but it's not really related to what we're recommending here.
So how do you propose this training be done? Is it workshops, or sending out emails and such?
Sure. I think what we're suggesting is maybe part of the new hire process would be sufficient to handle it. We have various protocols that we go through as far as the new hire goes. They're trained in various different areas, such as sexual harassment and other things, and we're just suggesting adding that to the protocol so that new users coming in understand the dangers and what they need to do if they get a suspicious email and so on.
Did that answer your question? Are you going to initiate that training?
No, sir, that would be a management function.
Okay.
We are merely suggesting that.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I understand. Any more questions? We got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'd like to adjourn from the legislative session and convene as an Urban Services Commission. Need a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Like to entertain a motion to approve the closed session minutes of December fifth, two thousand and seventeen, where we consulted with legal counsel.
Shall move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? I'm sorry. All opposed? Motion carried. Like to entertain approval for the closed session minutes from December nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, to consult with legal counsel again?
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Like to entertain resolution number, a motion for resolution number three, oh three, two thousand and eighteen, to establish Urban Services Commission policy on non-beneficial use of water.
Shall move.
Were you supposed to read that?
That's fine.
I didn't mean to take your job. Do you have a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions for Ms. Don?
Could we have her explain?
Yes. Can you come up, please, and explain this?
Dawn Farks, Director of Finance. I was asked by the Commission to come up with a policy so that citizens who are requesting a reduction in their urban service bill, which is their sewer bill, could come directly to the Department of Finance instead of having to come before the Commission. Currently, there's no policy, or was no policy in place, that gave me the authority to reduce a bill. So every question had to come before the Urban Service Commission. I've put together a policy that has two parts. The first part being for non-beneficial use of water. If the city of Salisbury has gone out and found that there is a leak, and it has been fixed, and they tell us that they've reduced theirs, we will automatically reduce ours as well. They only look at them as if they're three times their average usage. I was asked that if we could put something into place also for someone who is less than that. So we determined a two-times limit of their average consumption. They would have to give us their historical consumption. They have to have a licensed plumber review to see that there is a leak and fix it, and they would have to bring us a copy of that invoice along with a request for the reduction. We do want to put an appeal so that if I say no, they do have a way to come before the Commission at that point. So what I'm trying to do is just make it so that the Finance Office has a little bit more leeway in helping the citizens.
John, did you have something?
So we have an either-or though in there.
Yes.
Two or three times.
Yes.
And we need to make a decision on whether we're going to do it two or three times, or?
No. I actually, during the work sessions, I had brought two versions. One version with just three times, and then one version with both three times. Or if the city of Salisbury denies it, they can still come to the county and request if it's two times. The usage is two times their normal usage.
Did we not discuss that they could bring a receipt in from a park that they bought if they repaired something?
Originally, I had, and at the last work session, it was requested that it actually be a licensed plumber.
I don't remember that part, but I do remember the receipt.
I believe, um, I'm sure Mr. Hall brought it up, it being licensed. I think you...
And I'll tell you the reason why. We could go out and buy a park and go ahead and present it, and say, "This fixed it," whether it did or didn't.
Well, they would know it didn't fix it if they had to build again next month.
I do recall, and we could look back through it, that the question was on the table, do we want to have it be a licensed plumber or then bring a receipt? And I believe everyone agreed to licensed at that point. And that's why I made the change, and we're back today for the voting.
Yeah, I don't remember that either, but, um...
Is anybody else?
Something that... Go ahead.
Well, would we be open to an amendment on that? Because, you know, a tarly flapper, you know, you can buy one for three dollars.
My thing, you're going to see through the consumption history. You will see that they, you know, they had this consumption, and it's highly increased, and then it's going back down. There's obviously proof of something that has happened. Now, it could be that they filled their pool. It could be that they watered their lawn, which is beneficial use of water. And the only way to actually know that it was for non-beneficial use of water would be to have a licensed plumber come in. That's exactly right. They could go buy a three-dollar flapper and to get hundreds of dollars off their bill.
Right, that's right. You're right.
And I know I've done it before. I watered my lawn and then gone away for the weekend and forgot that I left it on, and had a significant bill. I filled pools, so there are valid reasons.
There were valid reasons. I were bought.
Any more questions? Um, I did have a question. Um, I wrote down something about the city appeal. Now, the city will peel it, and then they'll come to us?
We already now, when a customer receives a bill that is three times their normal bill, they already take it to the city of Salisbury. They already provide us. They provide us with the consumption. They provide us with the amount that they've written off and with the information from their Public Works Department that someone has been out there. They've seen the leak. The leak's been repaired. They've gone back out to make sure it's repaired. They've done all the legwork. And that's where the city's already granted them a percentage off of their bill, but we were still having to bring it up to the Commission. And so that will take that to where we can just, once they provide us with that information, and at the request of the citizen, we can go ahead and just take, reduce their bill, reduce their bill down for their sewer.
So part of the policy is having somebody from your office make the final decision. Would that be you?
Yes.
Or anyone else?
It will have to be upon approval of me.
Okay. Now, I had a question about site visits. Are we going to do any site visits?
We don't have personnel to do site visits.
Okay, answer my question.
And that was another reason for the licensed plumber that was brought up.
That's my next question.
Was that we do not have the personnel to go out and do site visits. I know I don't have someone in my office that would be able to, you know, tell us that kind of thing.
You already answered my next question, because I was going to say who.
Yeah.
That's fine. It sounds like you've got more work to do on this?
We actually have, I think I have five, possibly six requests downstairs.
It's close to that, yeah.
That I have not read because I did not want to have bias on the policy. As soon as we have a policy in place, I will look at those and be getting back to the citizens on decisions.
This is to approve it today.
This is to approve it today.
Okay. So any more questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Need a motion to adjourn from the Urban Services Commission and reconvene into the legislation session as the Wacomiko County Council.
Shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, we have public comments. If there's anybody that would like to speak. For public comments, please limit all public comments to three minutes or less. And any presented material may be submitted to the council members. Please include ten copies. And if you would, go to the podium, state your name and your county of residence.
Dave Gosley, Wacomiko County. I was at the last council meeting, and your resolution number nineteen, two thousand and eighteen, the, I believe it was animal control. There was a lengthy discussion on the floor at that time. And from what I heard, there could be a lot of area for improvement. I'm concerned about the Fourth Amendment rights. And the thing that really stuck out in my mind was that if they make a mistake and go take an animal off your property, and they feed it for three days, they have to hold it for three days or whatever cardinal rules, and they are found wrong, then the owner of the animal still has to pay room and board, even though it's no fault of their owner or anything like that. I think if they make a mistake, that they should eat your mistake the same as any other company or any other business or person. That if they make a mistake, it shouldn't be the animal owner's responsibility to pay for that. That's number one. And number two, this is a farming area. And the right to go on a farmer's property or a farm dog... I was raised on a farm. We had farm dogs and farm animals that run out on the farm itself. That was their bibic. They kept the other animals away and things like that. There's a lot of gray area there that concerns me greatly. And I think it needs a lot of revisiting before you take and make something into law that's going to harm individual animal owners, which I am not one, but I'm speaking for them. That's going to be harmful to them and to their own, their way of life. If they're wrong, then fine, then let them, they can pay for it. But if they're not wrong, then they should not have to pay for it. Thank you.
Somebody has a... Thank you, Mr. Gosley. Do we have any more public comments? No more public comments? How about council comments?
Well, just a comment to Mr. Gosley, but he's on the phone. Those are some of the areas we are, we are looking at some of those areas of the law to fix. So I know that Mr. Taylor, our attorney, is looking to address some of those concerns. So that's why we're taking the time to delay the passage of it to make sure it's a law that doesn't infringe upon anybody's rights and things like that. So thank you for bringing those up.
Any more council comments? The Commission is still working on it. Are they still accepting comments from the public?
Right now, we have the two attorneys. We have our Roscoe Leslie, the, he works for the county attorney, and then we have Mr. Bob Taylor working on that.
Well, thank you for those comments. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank everyone for being here. My wing to the right here reminded me. So thank you, everybody, for attending. Now, what do we have next on the agenda? Alright. Motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by administrative closed session pursuant to the General Provisions Article, Section three dash one oh four, to discuss internal auditor project updates. Phew. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The first open work session is a stormwater management update, and we have Mr. Weston Young here, Deputy Director of Administration. And with him is Mr. Dallas Baker, our Director of Public Works.
Good morning, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works.
Welcome.
So, yeah, we have a few updates for, I guess, regarding stormwater. I'll turn it over to Dallas, but we'll entertain any questions that pop up along the way.
The, one of the first things is we have scheduled the first round of countywide drainage meetings for the public. The intention is to present them, presentations similar to what the council saw back when this process first started, to bring in our drainage area maps and then basically ask for their input on problem areas that they've seen so we can get a better idea of locations that we need to focus on, but also solicit some input on things that they think the county can do to help address drainage issues. The first of those meetings is on March first, and these are all six p.m. meetings. The first one's March first at Pittsville. Then we have March eighth at Mardella Springs, then March thirteenth in the Westside Community Center, and then finally, March fifteenth at the County Civic Center. So those have all been posted on our website, been issued in a press release, and we're in general trying to get the word out as best we can.
Can letters be sent out to the PDAs, Public Drainage Association members? I know you've put it on the website. I know it's been in the paper, but sometimes people don't read those. So I'm going to try to call the folks in our neighborhood, you know, in my district, and maybe some of the other council members will too, to make sure they get there.
You mean letters to the managers of the PDAs?
Yeah, yeah.
To advise them of the public meeting?
You all got their addresses, and also it'd be a good idea.
Mark? John, do you have anything? Matt? I think this is a great idea. We talked about these public meetings several times before. And I think my concern too is with Mr. Holliday, Holliday Holloway. Councilman Holloway is getting the public involved, and I don't know if there's a direct way to get the people that have been contacting us the most about this. I'm certainly going to try to respond to the ones that have contacted us. And I know that you don't have a chain email with everyone's address, but if we could advertise as much as we can.
We will, absolutely. The second item we have is the Pratt Road Drainage Study that has finished up the survey work out there. They're translating that survey data over to CAD drawings to begin the analysis. They're also working on the grant application. That application is due to MDE by March third, and they are hoping to have that finished up this week and then over to us for our review before submitting it to the state for reimbursement on the grant. The second, the third item rather, is legislation. We're continuing to work on draft legislation for a nuisance ordinance to cover folks that fill in their swales with trash, put a building on top of it, just fill it in with dirt for whatever reason. So the county has some teeth so that if we have problems where one neighbor is flooding another neighbor, we don't have to just respond to them, "Well, sorry, hire a lawyer and sue." They'll be got the ability to be able to step in and try to help the citizens out without having to take the legal route. The, and we hope to have a draft of that to you guys for the next meeting.
Alright, a question on that. Does anybody have a question on that? I know you're asking for some teeth for legislation there. How are we going to know who, what the offender was, other than being on somebody else's property?
You'd see a big pile of debris or dirt in the swale blocking the drainage.
But it would be in their property.
It would be on their property, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. On the fourth item, the Baron Creek front, the drain, or the study is, I should say, the design is underway. They've completed the soil borings last week, and they, or rather, the week before last, and they were trying to complete the survey last week, but with all the rain, it kind of kept the surveyors from getting into where they need to be. But that process is underway.
So what's the timeframe, do you think, for, I mean, is it still on target?
Yeah, I've not heard of any delays for that. We've also been out these past couple weeks cleaning out inlets. Now, you know, the snow's passed us by. We're out cleaning out the inlets with the rain we've been getting, making sure that, you know, areas where we have closed drainage systems are open and functioning. And lastly, we're still continuing to do drive-bys of areas such as Pratt Road and Kwood Drive whenever we get storms to make sure that those roads aren't flooding, that the drainage system is operating correctly.
Yeah, we've had a fair amount of rain, but no big, big-scale ones. Have you had any issues, or is everything functioning properly?
No, I've been driving out there personally. I've not seen anything. The pipes are accepting it, and, you know, like you said, we've received a fair amount of rain. Fortunately, it's been spread out over time, which is really the big, big item.
I know we've just had one of your key people at Rhodes retire. How's your staffing levels? I mean, do you have enough people there to do the work that needs to be done?
We have a few open positions right now. We are working on getting those filled with HR and getting the positions advertised and things like that.
Yeah, I think overall, with keeping our ditch network clean, as well as maintaining the whip projects, that every year we put more in. We may need additional crews in the long run to assist with that. But, yeah, I think, you know, there are vacancies now.
There's a lot of prep to be done for new paving projects, too.
That's, clearing the shoulders and all of that in anticipation of paving.
Are you up to date on that? I mean, things, I think you probably haven't started it yet, but I mean...
We've actually started. We're out on Law's Road. We're pushed out on Law's Road today during some cross-roads pipe replacement. Right now, we are a little bit behind, but it's more because of the weather. It's been so wet that, you know, it's, we need a stretch of about a week, let things dry out to get up there. But no, we are looking to go around cutting shoulders, because we see paving season, you know, right around the corner.
Any more questions?
I just had one comment. I think I've talked to Dallas and Weston about this, but, you know, the state is getting ready to come out with the new NPDES MS four general permit, which we'll be responsible for in the county for the first time. The city of Salisbury is subject to it already, but the new permit is going to have a restoration requirement in it that is not in the current Salisbury permit. And that means restoring areas that do not already have what's deemed to be adequate stormwater management. It doesn't relate directly to what you're speaking of, but there's obviously an overlap. I think it would be wise to look very carefully. Those draft regulations are out and have been now for some time. Probably are going to be issued within the next thirty, sixty days. And I just mention that because the state does enforce that. Montgomery County just got hit with a three thousand, three hundred thousand dollar, pardon me, penalty for not complying with the permit that it's already subject to, which is essentially now being rolled down to the smaller counties and municipalities. So it's something to be, keep your eye on.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We've been aware of it for years. I was over at the city when this got, this program started. We actually just signed a contract to do the baseline mapping, which is one of the first phases of that permit. mapping, which is one of the first phases of that permit, and so we've, we have taken steps to complete the first step of that permit process before we've even gotten the permit, so we're way out in front.
So what's the next step on that?
So the first step is you come up with a map of your area saying, okay, what is our impervious area for the county, okay? And then you say, okay, from there, what areas are being treated? And the goal is a certain level of reduction, or reduction or treatment of impervious areas beyond a deadline. So we say, okay, this is how much impervious area we've got, I believe it's 2006 is when they, when they draw the line, so we've, say we had a parking lot that was constructed before 2006, and it's receiving treatment, that can be taken out of the calculation for how much impervious area we have to treat. So then we have areas that are, we don't have treatment on, and those are the places that we then have to focus providing some type of treatment for those impervious areas. So, except that, it's basically, you know, figure out what you got, figure out where you need to go, and then develop a plan to get there. There's also other steps along the way, like pollution prevention plans, there's illicit discharge detection and elimination programs, which is surveying your storm drain pipes to see if you've got some odd colored liquid or smell or something coming out, to find out if anyone's illegally dumping into the storm drain system. There's also a education and outreach portion as well, so there's actually six, if I remember correctly, six key portions of the permit that we have to all, that we have to address. But the big time-consuming part is that initial baseline mapping, and that's why we're getting a jump on it now, so that come September 2019, when that is due, we've already got it done, right now it looks like we should have that done by April or May of 2019, so you know, approximately six months before it's due, we'll have it completed.
Yeah, of course, the big money part of it comes later, in the restoration.
Yes, and we can also, we can double dip and tie those restoration projects with whip projects, and it all becomes nice and synergistic, and we'll be looking for ways to maximize that bang for our buck and get double credit for things.
The 10 counties that have been subject to it now for about five years are about 30%, they estimate, maybe 35% through the restoration requirement, and they've already spent over half a billion dollars.
Yeah, and places like Montgomery and PG County, where you've got that much room, and where that much real estate costs you about a million dollars, it is, it's very costly. One of the benefits with our is we do have room, and, you know, we're not jammed in on top of each other, and everything's asphalt, and everything costs $80,000 an acre.
The important thing to mention as well is that this permit doesn't cover the entire county, it just covers urbanized areas within the county, which are notably around the various jurisdictions, so parts of the county that are adjacent to the city of Salisbury are going to be where we need to focus these efforts. The urbanized areas are going to come with more impervious surface, so like Dallas was saying, it's pretty much remove impervious surface or provide some sort of treatment to it. The rest of the permit tends to be good housekeeping, so how much street sweeping are we doing? Are we cleaning the pipes? What are we doing at our facilities to make sure that we don't have, say, open containers of paint when it rains and things like that, trying to limit potential for pollutants to get into the system? Education and outreach, you know, you can get into the weeds on that, and if the EPA comes down to audit the program, they will, it's a lot of documentation, not just showing how many roads we've swept, but how many publications have we put out, or educational packets, how many, you know, events did we attend and provide education about stormwater controls? So it's a lot of extra paperwork that we didn't have before, we've been communicating with the state regularly, so this isn't something that is new to us, and like Dallas said, once we have the mapping, we'll have a better idea of the specific areas we need to maintain, how many pipes fall into it, into those permitted areas. Outside the permitted areas, we're just going to keep doing our normal maintenance and whip projects.
Explain to me what you mean by treating impervious surfaces. I know about street sweeping, so...
Sure.
Regulate how much, let's say, a business has to sweep their parking lot, their paved parking lot, or what's treating, what do you mean by treating that?
Yeah, so what I mean by that is, prior to stormwater regulations, let's take, you know, a good example would be the old mall, and how much pavement was out there. Well, if you look at the new mall, and you look at it from an aerial photo, you'll see that stormwater ponds were put in around it. If you were to build that same facility today, it's even more restrictive, and you would see a lot more what we call bio-retentions, or like miniature wetlands running between parking spaces. So if you take a pre-stormwater, say, parking lot, wherever it is, and put in some sort of treatment, so when I say that, I mean put in some sort of bio-retention, or that now drains, instead of, because the old school, old school stormwater was get it off the site as fast as possible. So you get it to an inlet, you get it to a pipe, and truck it to the water as fast as you can. The problem with that is you start, the people downstream are affected, so then they put in, and when stormwater ponds came about, is control the stormwater on your site so you're not flooding your neighbors downstream. And where it's evolved since is now a water quality element, so not only don't flood your neighbors, but the water leaving, let it, give it a chance to infiltrate, that helps replenish groundwater, which is a net positive, but give plants time to absorb it and all of that, that helps lower the amount leaving, and it also lets it leave cleaner. So in the case of an old parking lot, you would then maybe lose two spaces and have it drained to a bio-retention area, before, you know, on heavy rainfalls, all of these devices have overflow, such that when you get inundated, it's going to go down a pipe and go for the larger storms, but for the smaller rainfalls, like what we've been having, where it's just a lot of rain, but it's over a long amount of time, the plants can absorb it, the ground can absorb it, and then there's less leaving the site. So what they're going to want us to do is show that either the county, or if, I would think if redevelopment occurs in those areas, in those permitted areas, we could claim, cleaning there, I guess, treatment there.
So we're not going to have to go into an existing parking lot and do that, correct? Or is that going to be something, is that safe to push for that?
We're going to have to weigh our options, I mean, ideally, like our whip projects, we focus on public, publicly owned, county-owned properties, so that we don't have any land acquisition cost, we'll have to see, and that goes back to the mapping that's being done. I think, I think it would help to have a comprehensive work session to talk about this, but we're not at that point yet, we don't have the mapping done, and although there are general permit requirements out there, you know, they will tune those specifically to Wycomica. So, you know, we're already working on our game plan, but I don't think we're quite ready for that elaborate conversation yet.
Yeah, Weston, Weston mentioned the EPA inspection, they pulled a SNAP inspection on Salisbury about two years ago, I think, and what do they get, like $25,000 fine, or?
Yes.
Well, they call them consent decrees, but they're really fines.
So I actually, when I first came in and was tasked with developing the MS4 program, I went over and sat down with the city of Salisbury's engineering department with Amanda Pollak, and said, you know, what, you know, I was there when Salisbury first set up their program, and was away for a while and came back and said, okay, well, you know, you all just got audited, what were their findings, where were your dings at? And so I really had a great exchange of information with Amanda to find out the problems that they had encountered, and in a nutshell, what it boiled down to is EPA was dinging them on places where they tried handling things in-house. You know, if the EPA saw you spent money on a consultant to do this, or saw you spent money for sending out brochures and pamphlets, those are the places where they weren't getting dinged on, it was where they tried to handle, okay, well, look, we took our city inspectors out to look at these storm drain pipes, and had our own form developed, and that's what, it was kind of, you know, it met their permit requirements, but EPA was still trying to ding them on it, and they talked back a lot of that, a lot of what EPA was originally trying to find them, by showing them where they were actually complying with the permits, but, yes, like I said, I sat down with them, and really I've been going off of some of that guidance as how we develop our program in the county.
So in summary, we're well aware of the MS4 permit that's coming our way.
Any more discussion, any more questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Baker. I'd like to recognize Salisbury City Council President Jack Heath in our audience, I saw him earlier, but I thought he left, he was hiding behind someone, thank you. Right now, we're going to take a 10-minute break, and then we're going to come back and work on some discussion with the National Folk Festival and Salisbury Marathon with some of our people in the audience, so we'll be back in 10 minutes.